I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start with our consent items. We have the approval of minutes from February 17th, 2024, regular board meeting, the approval of the minutes from March 4th, regular meeting, and the approval of minutes from March 4th study session. Any corrections, comments, questions? Steven looked like he had something.
No, just reading the name.
Okay. Okay. There's no comments from the public, none from the board. I'll take your motion to approve the three minutes under the consent items.
So moved.
Second, moved by Ethan, second by Katie. All in favor? Raise your hand. Nobody? Motion passes. Six zero, right, yeah. Alright, we will move on to the financial report. Shawna, you want to walk us through that?
The education fund, our receipts were $1,094,389.20. For the month, our year-to-date is $2,156,784.46. And our month-to-date expenses were $832,042.48. That leaves our appropriation balance at $13,455,443.57. And our year-to-date expenditures have been $1,915,346.43. Our net appropriation spend is at 87.54%. And our cash balance right now, or as of the end of February, was $865,220.59. Our... Hold that thought. There we go. Our debt service, we've received receipts of $8,231.34. And that makes our year-to-date $16,462,68. Leaving our appropriation balance the same at $3,057,000. Because we haven't made a debt payment, we won't make one until the end of June 1st of July. So that leaves our cash balance at $1,576,347.39. And then our... Oops. Operations fund is receipts of $20,167.96. And we did not do any transfers in yet. I actually did a transfer this month, so it'll show up in next month's financial report. Leaving our year-to-date receipts at $31,122,42... Or, excuse me, $42. And our month-to-date expenses were $238,289.70, leaving our appropriation balance at $5,332,269.21. That leaves us at 88.58% of our net appropriation spend down. Our year-to-date expenditures have been $687,280.79, leaving us a negative cash balance of $225,970.29 for the end of February.
Any questions for Shawna? Under the financial report, we also have the claims totaling $890,830.48. And the approval of payroll totaling $569,874.31. Any questions, comments on the claims or payroll? Any questions from the public? Having said that, I'll accept a motion to approve the financial report, all three items.
So moved.
Moved by Jenny.
Second.
Second by Mark. No other comment? Raise your right hand. All in favor? No votes. Motion carries six zero. Action items. We have the approval of the agreement for the career and technical education services and field of commercial driver's licenses. Was everybody able to read this four-page resolution?
Yes.
Would anyone like to hear it read out loud? And volunteer for that? Add that caveat in. This is the agreement for the career and technical education services. Jenny, do you want to give us the crib note version?
Sure. So, we started the CBL program for both students and for adults. I received a phone call from Angie Miller, superintendent at Caston. They were interested in sending some of their students here for that program if there was room available. It's a great way for us to offset some of those expenses they paid to send their students here for that class. We felt, both Angie and I, felt it necessary to not only outline the agreement in regards to payment and how those payments will come in, but also I wanted to make sure that we safeguard the program for Rochester students moving forward. So one of the caveats in this is that, moving forward, we would fill the class with our students first. If there are spaces available, then we will open those up for Caston to continue to send their students here. Right now, we have five students who are attending class from Caston, and it's going really, really well. And Logan Young is doing a really nice job. Angie's been fantastic to work with. And I appreciate Shawna, how we sat down and worked out funding for it, and it came out very similar to other CTE programs when we send students either to Lubin, Spore, or Plymouth. But we drew down on those expenses and be able to offset that moving forward.
About how many students do we have capacity for?
Logan wants to keep it between 12 and 15. And right now, I think that we have 11 kids in that room.
And will it be offered, I know it's offered now, will it be offered in the fall quarter or...?
Well, we'll probably just offer it one time a year. I'll have to talk to Oscar about that to be completely, but I know it's a lot to run, so probably about once a year. We have to make sure the students are 18, so having it in the start of that semester helps with that as well. And then we have four adults taking it in the evening as well, community members that we're working through.
Any other questions? Questions from the audience?
How many students, did you say, from Caston?
Five.
Barring no other questions, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ethan.
Second.
Seconded by Steven. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Approval of the athletic hamburger changes for 2025, 2026. Did everybody get a chance to look at this? I know we talked about it in the study session, the majority of which were the dates that were changing. A little bit on the adult zebra pass going to $100, and the senior citizens pass changing to 50. Couple of numerical changes, language changes. Anything you wanted to highlight?
No, I think the majority of this is making sure that we can continue to remain in compliance with IHSA policies. And Cal has done a nice job of outlining that on the first page there in regards to the changes that are being sought.
I would also note that Cal mentioned us, but just as for the wider view, especially if somebody's watching this, that the family pass going away is because it didn't make financial sense for a family to buy that, because the student pass has gone down so much in what we're charging students. So you'd just be better off to buy the adult in that sense, so.
Thank you.
It's saving families money, not the other way around.
Yeah, thank you, Jenny. Any other questions about the changes? Questions from the public? Barring none, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Katie. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Approval of FFA soil judging state qualifiers going to Oklahoma land judging invitation from April 26 through May 2nd. Overnight field trip.
Yes, they'll actually be gone for several nights. This is the culmination of all of the hard work that the soil judging team has put in. I think it's been at least three years, five years? So I remember driving how time flies. It's a great trip. Justin has a lot of landmark sites to see on the way out and on the way back. And then the students will participate in the national land judging competition out there in Oklahoma. It's a great opportunity to showcase what Rochester students can do while also making sure that they get to see some of the landmarks along the way and meet students from other FFAs across the United States.
Any questions or comments on that? From the public? We also have another RHS football team attending Manchester.
Do we need to vote on that one?
I was just gonna put them together. RHS football team attending Manchester Team Football Camp, June 16th through June 19th. This is also overnight activity.
Coach Schaefer has taken the team the past few years to this camp, and I believe that it continues to be beneficial to the team.
Any questions or thoughts on Manchester Team Football Camp? Concerns, questions? Any from the public? Barring any concerns about putting these two together, I'll accept a motion to approve both of the FFA soil judging state qualifying trip as well as the Manchester Team Football Camp approval forms.
So moved.
Moved by Jenny.
Second.
Seconded by Steven. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Donations. We have Riddle Elementary, $600 donation for One School One Book from Everwise Credit Union. And quite a number of these for prom, so bear with me. We have a $60 total. It was for $15 gift cards from Nude Brew. A $50 donation from the House of Decor. $200 donation from Wilson Fertilizer. A $200 donation from Tidewater. A $200 donation from Lease Escavating. A $300 donation from Rapid View. A $100 donation from Shepherds. A $100 donation from Rochester Boat Company. A $50 donation from Odell Lumber. A $100 donation from Rochester Iron and Metal. A $60 donation from Straight Edge Hair Salon. $200 donation from David Musselman, Indiana Farm Bureau Insurance. $50 gift certificate for a petty and manny from Kenny G. $20 donation from Mustard Seed Mercantile. A $100 donation from Mike's Trash. A $100 donation from Steve Moore Agency. A $250 donation from Rochester Metal Products. And all of those were for RHS Prom, for the prom. We have a donation for RHS Choir for $700. Needs for the choir from Rochester Music Boosters. RHS Track and Field, $100. Needs for Track and Field from Dwayne and Megan Balan. Oh, I said that right? Is that right? RHS Track and Field, $110. Need for Track and Field from John and Ashley Hayes. And RHS $100, RHS needs in memory of John Walker from Arthur and Mary Leela Hoffman. Any that I missed? Okay. Once again, it's absolutely amazing, outstanding what the community will donate. And continues to donate every month, literally. Any questions or comments? From the board? From the public? Barring none, I'll accept a motion to accept the donations.
So moved.
Moved by Ethan.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. And personnel report. We have personnel report for March 24th. I thought that said 2023. 2025. Recommendations for Columbia Elementary. Sydney Gutman maternity leave beginning April 21st, 2025 through fall of 2025. Grace Tubb to cover maternity leave for Mrs. Gutman. Pay day one through 14 is $140 per day. On day 15 and beyond, it will be the daily rate for the first-year teacher. Jamie Kirkwood, Columbia Summer Reading Head Teacher. Stipend of $1,000. When teaching, she will receive her hourly rate of $38.20 per hour. Riddle Elementary Spring Intercession, Amy Freeman, teacher, hourly rate 3903. Alyssa Ramsey, teacher, hourly rate 3856. And Heather Schaefer, Instructional Assistant, hourly rate 1693. On FMLA, we have Kristy Bitterling, RHS, February 24th, 2025 through approximately March 17th, 2025. Amber Reinhold, Admin Office, intermittent March 25th, 2025 through approximately September 2025. Dawn Mappin, RHS, extended until approximately April 16th, 2025. And Valerie Tully? Tully? RMS, March 8th, 2025 until approximately March 25th, 2025. Any questions or comments about personnel report? Any from the public? Barring none, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Katie.
Second.
Seconded by Ethan. All in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion carries six zero. Mrs. Vance?
We'll go through directors and principals reports. So Mr. Snyder, if you'd like to report on Columbia, please.
Alright, based on the donations that we just saw for prom, I think Columbia is going to host its first annual Columbia Prom this year. I just have to get started on that. I didn't realize how big a business that is. But it is very great that they get to do that, because I know it's expensive and it's a great thing for the kids. But I don't, I don't really think we'll do a little kid prom, but we do enough dance in there. So let's just talk real quick about the last month and some of the stuff we had go on. I know that you've heard some of this stuff, because we told you where it's gonna happen, but this is what we've kind of gone through. Zebra Zone kids went to the library, public library, did an activity there and joined effort with them, got their picture taken with the Dolly Parton cut out, which they didn't have any clue who Dolly Parton was, so it meant nothing to them. And then we took another group of kids to the high school to work with one of the cooking classes there, one of the... I can't remember which level it was, but it was one of their levels. And the kids get to pair up with some of the high school kids and cook in one of the kitchens, and they really enjoy that too. So they had a great time doing that. And they liked the high school, like walking around and seeing all the big kids. We also took the entire school, including our daycare, to RHS for the Peter Pan show, and that was fantastic. The RMS kids did a great job. It was a really enjoyable show. They worked really hard. And our kids absolutely loved it. We had our Read Across America activities in first grade, and that basically entails us bringing in readers from the community. They get to sit down and read some of the Dr. Seuss books with the kids. The parents that come in, parents and community members come in, they really enjoy that. And the kids love having the guest speakers. They get tired of us that regularly read to them. They don't want to see us anymore. They want to see these other people. But we had some people from the middle school. I think we had a teacher from the middle school that had come over, and just people from all over. So it was really, really good. We did our kids' heart challenge. We raised $4,172.29. And that was led by Kristen Jana. And she does that every year and did a fantastic job with that. It was a lot of money to raise for our building. So we're real proud of our kids and the community for that as well. And then Mrs. Flynn, one of our special needs teachers, took a group of her kids over to the public library as well. And they got to get a book read to them and kind of, you know, see how the library operates and really enjoyed that trip as well. Upcoming things that we've got going. Intercession started today. We had 27 kids total in attendance, 15 in first grade. And then 12 in kindergarten. And we should be probably over 30 by tomorrow. There were several kids that had appointments and stuff. I called parents. A lot of them were, they forgot, but they'll be there today. So I expect our numbers to kind of go up a little bit tomorrow. We have a bowling enrichment scheduled, which Luke did today. I'm not gonna steal his thunder, but we have one on Wednesday. Riddle went did theirs today. We'll be taking our kids out to the bowling alley on Wednesday. There's 50 kids. 55 kids signed up right now. So it's maxed out. We maxed out all the... And they did, they did as well when they had their signups. So there was a lot of interest in that. Kindergarten roundup is April 17th. Our special needs classes will start going to Riddle in April. And every couple of weeks, we have trips where we take those kids over. And they get to start getting used to Riddle, meeting staff, walking the building, and just kind of getting ready to do that transition for next year. We do that with first grade as well, but that'll be in May. And then our first grade will do their Earth Day field trip or their Earth Day on April 22nd. And that's a trip around, several trips to different places in Rochester to study Earth Day. That's what we got. Yes. So right before break, Riddle finished up the iRead testing. We did receive preliminary results. Those are embargoed. But we were happy with what's going on so far there. We've got a nice plan for all our kids that either in second grade that were not on track or in third that did not pass. Got together with my special ed department and Title I, and they've got, they already had a fantastic plan put together before I even called the meeting. So kudos to them. So I'm very confident that we'll, we'll do well again. Right when we get back from spring break, we're gonna start the scheduling process for next year. So we always know the last quarter's warp speed. And we're gonna be going right away, right when we get back, working on that. As Mr. Schneider said, intercession started today. I think Riddle had around 17, 19 kids. Also had our bowling event. So shout out to Country Lanes for hosting us today. And the kids discovered the jukebox there. I no longer know any of the songs, so there's that. And, oh, our second grade concert went very well before break. It was a Thursday before break. And a shout out to our music teacher, Mrs. G, and our second graders. It was a really neat concert. The kids are super cute. They did a great job. It was entitled Bugs, and it was, it was pretty cool. So just wanted to give them a shout out. And I believe the, the show's out there for viewing as well. That's what we got.
Any questions for Mr. Berber?
Okay. The last week in February was FFA week. RMS students had dress-up days and fun activities, while RMS staff participated in an underground spirit week themselves, so we all had fun with that. March 3rd, RMS Theater Arts put on the musical Peter Pan Jr. They did an amazing job. If anybody went, they really did fantastic. There were a ton of fifth graders in the cast, and they just did a great job. Then they also did put on shows for Columbia as well. The VFW Patriot Pen Winners were announced. First place with Brooklyn Guard, she's in eighth grade. Second place, Hope Ball in eighth grade. And third place with Xander Handy in seventh grade. That is an essay contest that the VFW puts on every year. March 7th, Student Council hosted Midnight Gym. We hadn't done one of those in a hot minute. I think I was a teacher when I hosted the last one. Right. We're not entirely crazy. So we did a little earlier than that, yeah. But it was a great time, because we're well behaved and it was well-attended. Student Council hosted that, and it was a good fundraiser and a good time. Um, let's see. RMS eighth grade girls won the Basketball RRC Conference title. And March 10th, we had a fantastic choir concert, so kudos to Ms. Allen and her students for that. On March 11th, we had the Colts Choose Love Assembly. They came to RMS and RHS. It was the mascot of the Colts without the mascot costume or mascot uniform, however you'd say that. The kids loved it. It was very well-received. And I just want to thank Olivia Bailey and Dan Bailey as they kind of brought it here. From Olivia doing, I can't remember, if Oscar was here, he would tell me, she did a program.
Hobie.
Hobie, thank you, guys. So she went there and saw that opportunity and brought it back. And her and Mr. Bailey talked to Oscar and I about getting them to come here, and it was, it was amazing. So thank you to them. March 12th, fifth grade had a presentation/reenactment of the American Revolution by Todd Wilson. They enjoyed that. RMS then had a band concert on March 12th. Kudos to those students as well and their hard work, as well as Ms. Bendez. Mrs. Pryor, our sixth grade language arts teacher, and Mr. Hyatt, who is a student teacher right now with us, brought back a project called 20% Time. They were able to present that on March 13th. They presented during the school day and let students see. And then they presented also in the evening for adults to see. And that went very well. So thanks to them for hosting a great project. March 13th, Mrs. Warland's Fax Classes hosted a thank you celebration for all RMS IAs. This included cookies, pies, drinks, and gifts that they all made, and it was St. Patrick's Day themed. So thank you to them for hosting that for our hard-working IAs. We couldn't do it without them. We had three seventh grade students score perfect on their I-Learn checkpoint three for math. So that was a big, big deal. Our last day was our PBIS Day and Talent Show. That was this past Friday, March 14th. That all went great. That next Saturday, our RMS wrestling team won RRC conference as well. So we've had some really successful athletic groups this winter. Today was our first day of spring intercession. We had 24 of 29 students show up, so that is really good for the middle school. We struggled to get kids typically, so we did a little bit differently this year, inviting more students and focusing on those not passing checkpoints. So we have kind of a different crop of students, and we had a lot attend. So looking forward to see the progress from that. Coming up, spring sports will be in full blast when we get back. We'll start to work on our end-of-the-year things, scheduling. It is lightning speed this last quarter. We do, the next thing coming up will be fifth grade orientation Monday, April 14th, and that's from 5:30 to 6:30. So I'll be getting that to go out to all incoming fifth grade parents and students. And then late April, the big I-Learn test approaches. And that's all I got.
The only thing new coming down the pipe is we have a new IIP system for the state, which encompasses the EL program. So that'll be where the ILPs will be housed. So all of my employees will have to be trained on that and how they can get in it and find everything that they can currently find in the current system. The new system goes live in August. So between now and the end of school, we have the training cohorts that the state has put out. So we'll navigate that and make sure everyone is familiar with what to do and where all those buttons are and that we're ready to go whenever it flips over, August 1st.
So during our NISC meeting this month, we had additional vendors come. Markon, which is our GFS produce. They just gave us a look towards summer and fall. We also had the Indiana Dairy Council there, the Farm to School there, and a registered dietitian. Our dietitian went over again the 25, 26 school changes as far as the sugar decrease on that with the cereals and such that we talked about last meeting. I also met with our GFS representative here in town. He came to see me. If we go with their new plan of how they want to do ordering for the fall, we could save anywhere from another $4,000 to $5,000 on that initial drop just for that month. It's something that we've been doing the last few years anyway. But we'll start with like our chemicals and then our supplies, and then we'll go to our freezer items. So we don't have such a huge drop the first two weeks of school. We'll pretty much just get a produce in the first week of school and everything else prior to that. And then we get an extra 1% bump on that. And then we get an extra 1% bump on that and that's about the estimate he has for us. We are participating in a full fuel up grant. We did this last year and RHS was awarded the package. They got a nice immersion blender. Both of these run about $2,000 as far as what we could get in equipment. RMS and RHS are the two that would qualify to apply for that. We have officially spent all of our USDA 25, 26 commodity dollars, which normally you get a few dollars left over here and there, but I managed to get every single penny because you have to buy increments of 100 pounds. So sometimes it gets a little difficult going in going, I want 101 pounds or I want 115 pounds, but actually every bit of it got spent this year. I had a training with General Mills. They set up to let us know what they had that would pass for the 25, 26 school year already and what they plan on doing to make sure that more of their products come online for that sugar decrease. They even had a chef that did a presentation for us. SFSP application is open. It is to be completed by April 30 and it is a long process. It takes anywhere from two to six weeks to complete. They're also doing a Tuesday at 2 with our SFSP state sponsor, or I'm sorry, state specialist. Her name is Tina Skinner. And because of this, they are enacting what they call, and this is new to me, a VCA, which is viability, management, administration capabilities and internal controls for program accountability. This is something everybody now has to do this year, so they're basically gonna have us come up with a plan to show, can we be viable? What are we gonna spend and what's gonna be our outcome? We also have a meeting with our field rep in Culver next month to go over what this new fulfillment is that we have to do. And Tina Skinner will be available every Tuesday at 2 if we need help getting, transitioning through that. I also had two meetings with our state representative. There's a possibility we could do something called Seeds in Summer where they would give us seeds and little pamphlets to hand out to students that participate in SFSP. It's more like a little herb garden, but if the students want to take it, they could take the seeds at any intercession location we have, or I'm sorry, SFSP location we have and they could take it home and plant it if they wanted to. So I think that's something that it would be nice to participate in. Students don't have to take it, but they can. And there's just a bunch of training and seminars and all of that coming up for the next two months for the 25, 26 school year and the summer feeding program.
I forgot one person that I wanted to mention. High school student Kevin Scholl is working on his Eagle Scout badge and he reached out to me earlier this winter, well, winter, spring, whenever, and wanted to do a project at Columbia. So over spring break, he has been renovating our teacher's lounge as his project and he's doing a fantastic job. He was in this morning as well, kind of finishing up and he's just down to redoing the chairs right now. But I just wanted to pass that along because I, he's, he's a high school student now and I love that this is the second Eagle Scout that we've hosted at Columbia and I just love their projects, giving back to the schools, doing something in our buildings, because they can do it anywhere, but it's nice that, that they, they do that, so.
I'd like to very quickly share that this is the first year that we are launching our distinguished alumni awards. Those nominations need to be turned in by March 28. So there are links on our website, looking forward to continuing that process, reading through those applications and then having the award ceremony this summer. So if you have anybody that you would like to nominate, please make sure we get those in by March 28. And again, the forms can be found on our website. I want to thank Mr. Bernanke, he covered a pool construction meeting for me. All reports are that we continue to remain on time and on budget, so I want to start working with the team, both the administrative team as well as the board to plan a summer open house so that we can show off the, the new pool facility and, and begin to work on making that a community area, just like we have done with the auditorium. And I know that our teams are looking forward to being back into the pool, so.
We don't have to actually be in the pool to have the celebration.
No, 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 but.
Just clear.
No, but we would like to open it up for everybody to come in and see.
Okay. Any other?
I know Doug just walked in. I know he's been out working on gates. I don't know if he has anything else he'd like to share quickly or?
Doors.
Doors, sorry, doors, not gates, doors.
Hey, Mr. Sherman, we've got some quotes coming in for upgrades of equipment and maybe a new lawnmower quote from a couple different places. And then, sorry, I forgot my notes back at the shop. Getting ready, we're getting the concession stands and the press boxes all cleaned up and ready to go for the season. So we'll be, we'll have that ready to go here shortly. And then we're working on cleaning the bleachers this week, so hopefully we'll get some 70, 80 degree weather, so it'll be nice and.
Saturday and Sunday's looking pretty good today.
Do what?
Saturday and Sunday's looking even seventy.
Oh, is it? Well, maybe we'll just put it off till the weekend. That's all I had.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Any board comments, additional?
I do want to say, I, I spoke with Kevin Thursday night, I think it was, as he and I were tag teaming the security during the FFA auction. I told him that the previous Friday, I was one of the judges for the District Two FFA program. And when I first got there, I pulled in and there was a bus from another district. And I, I will never complain about the amount of money that he is willing to, to put forth to keep our buses looking as good as they do. Because our buses look great and definitely compared to that one. So I, I told him Thursday and I just want everybody to know that we're, he's doing the best to keep those buses rolling and, and keeping them safe and, and when they come, definitely come into trade, that, that effort shows everything that he's putting in. So I definitely want to thank him for everything he's doing.
Thank you for sharing. He does a great job. Yeah, thank you for sharing. I'm sure you appreciated that. Any other comments?
Casey, I was gonna say, we, speaking of that, we did just receive two new buses. Kevin went today. I assigned the titles for him to go and do the trade and get two new buses. So we've got the, this year, well, they were ordered 18 months ago, I believe.
Great, good.
And I do want to give a shout out to the program that brought the mascot in. I will say that there was a lot of high praise from eighth graders that I heard.
Hard to get, isn't it?
Yes. I mean, that's high praise, you know, for those programs and, you know, they, they loved it, absolutely loved it. I mean, when, when the 14-year-olds come to you and tell you what they did during their day, because normally it's, oh, how was school? Boring. What's for dinner? You know, that's the conversation, but when they come to you and say, oh, this happened, you know, it's high praise, so kudos to everybody who brought that here, who made that happen and, and I hope to see it continue because it obviously, you know, went over well with multiple age groups, so very neat, very neat.
And Cassie, following the, the talent show, you had, Charlie and I were forced to watch, not forced, chose to watch. Chose to watch the entire movie.
Napoleon Dynamite.
Napoleon Dynamite. I never really got through the first 20 minutes of that and then.
We did not show them in school, just like.
We felt like we needed to watch that to understand the context.
It was fun. Any other comments from board members, audience? Well, thank you all for attending. Appreciate you being here and giving us your feedback. Enjoy the rest of your spring break.
Thank you.